Okay, we'll call the October 18th meeting of the Planning Commission order. We'll begin with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Teedman.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sidoti.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here.
Entertained a motion for the approval of the regular meeting of September 27, the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Yes. Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
We have two public hearings this evening. The format we follow for public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do at a particular location. Then those wishing to speak in favor are afforded an opportunity. Then those wishing to speak against are given a similar opportunity. Then we close the public portion and allow for questions of the commission members to the applicant. So with that in mind, first public hearing this evening is conditional use permit to allow jewelry stores a similar use to tradesmen at 8500 Station Street. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Would you come forward to the podium and identify yourself for the clerk, please, and give us a quick overview of what you'd like to do at that location?
My name is Brandon Holschuh. I'm from Brandon Holschuh LLC. I'm an independent jeweler. We do wholesale and custom design work for retailers. I'd like moving my studio in the Matchworks building to a location where I'd like to open it to limited retail, and I'm here to apply for a conditional use permit to make that happen.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? You come forward and identify yourself for the clerk, please, over here at the same podium.
My name is Jeff Heidnik. I'm the general manager of Orla Natural Gas. I'm not really necessarily against it, but I do have some concerns I'd like the commission to consider.
Go ahead.
So, we occupy the space to the west at 8470 Station Street. Got a contiguous parking lot with each other, and we've had issues in the past based on conditional use permits that have been permitted for that building with parking. Utilizing my parking lot for various activities that go on in the building, tried to work out with the building owner some sort of agreement that allows them to park on the parking lot but still give us access to the building. I need to make sure that I can get out of my building whenever it's necessary for various emergencies, maintenance work, whatever needs to be done for the gas industry. We are unfortunately unable to come to an agreement. I've had to install additional no parking signs, contract with a towing company to assure that parking doesn't take place on the property. To be honest with you, it just takes way too much time. I don't intend to be a parking lot attendant, and I just really would rather the folks didn't park on our parking lot. So, came to the city for some help initially. There was no consideration for where the occupants would park when they come to visit the building, so I thought, well, it would be a better opportunity to do this whenever a conditional use permit comes up for the building, to bring it up as a consideration that as part of the conditions, the employees, staff, visitors park within the confines of the parking that's allowed for the building itself. So I guess what I'm asking you is that as a condition of their conditional use permit that we address the parking problem, or the potential parking problem, on our property next year.
Okay. We can do that.
Pardon me?
We can do that.
Okay. Terrific.
Mr. Zeeman, any comments you'd like to make relative to the parking situation?
Yeah, the site is served, as the commission may be aware, both to the north of Station Street, as well as a parking lot directly to the east, and it's that westernly parking lot where it's not really delineated where the property line is that I think has been causing the adjacent property owner quite a lot of problems. Obviously, there's some remedial things the property owner can do, just post some signs or things of that nature. It was probably a bigger, I don't know, perhaps the gentleman can comment, it may have been a bigger issue when the Fork Restaurant was operating, as that would kind of tend to be a logical place that persons would have parked there in order to enter the restaurant. I don't know that tenants and employees would necessarily gravitate to that space because you're still going to have to walk around to the front of the building in order to access the tenant spaces. So I don't know if the specific use necessarily would either cause that problem to recur or exacerbate the problem. Obviously, I think if the restaurant were to reopen, that probably should take a much closer look relative to any conditional use permit that may be issued for that space.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak again? We'll get you answers.
Sure.
Anyone else wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. We'll ask you to come back forward. Mr. Heidnik, if you'd take a seat, and we'll be ready to go shortly.
Do you have some thoughts, additional thoughts of the parking, if I get any chance to say, to share those?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm not sure where this gentleman's going to set up, what part of the building he occupies. There are entrances to the building on the west side. I don't know if that's where you are occupying, nor do I care. I just know that there's a lot of cross-traffic through there. The potential for additional parking is there. My intent is to just assess it each time one of these CUPs come up so that we don't have an issue, and we can logically address it and have it considered, and have some help in policing it. That's really all my intention. I have no, like I said, I don't know where he comes in or out of the building, but it is contiguous to that parking lot, and I feel that it needs to be considered each time this opportunity arises.
Okay. Let me ask you a question.
Yep.
Have you had any conversation with the property owner about delineation of parking spaces?
I have not. I park my car in the lot across the street and enter through the front doors of the building.
Okay.
I will continue to do that.
It might be appropriate for the property owner to delineate where he's going to allow patrons and you to park.
Agreed.
Kathy, any comments from the administration?
Nothing other than what we speculated in the statement.
Okay. I'm going to make an initial condition that the property owner comes up with some sort of resolution of the parking situation there.
Okay.
Because we continue to add units to the operation of the building.
Understandable.
Okay.
I'm okay with the other conditions, the proposed conditions. They're all fine with me.
Commission members, any questions for the applicant?
I just have one question. The gentleman that spoke before, are you the owner of the adjacent property?
No, I'm a tenant.
Okay. Has there been any attempt to get the two owners together, both owners to pay for a fence, or, you know, has there been any success in that direction?
Mr. Heidnik, I need you back at the mic, if you're going to...
Initially, I had a conversation with my landlord. He said, left it up to me to decide how we want to handle the parking scenario. He really didn't have any interest in getting involved in it. I paid for the property. He felt that I had the opportunity to determine how it gets used.
Okay. I'm going to ask the administration to have some contact with the property owner of the building to have them come up with some sort of delineation of parking, not only for this tenant but for subsequent tenants and previous tenants as well. Is that okay with you?
Yes, that's good with me.
Any other questions for the applicant? I'm going to add that as a condition to the approval process.
Okay.
Okay. Entertained a motion.
I'll make the motion with the four conditions, the three conditions identified by the administration, and the fourth that Mr. Snow added.
Second.
You're ready.
Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Second use is a conditional use permit to allow recreation facility at 8500 Station Street. Is that applicant here? You know where we're going with this, right? You're going to have to talk to the property owner about parking.
Yes, and I know that I park in front of the building, and so do all my students, and there's plenty of parking every time I'm there.
Okay. I'm going to make the condition, the same condition as we made for the other property owner, for the other applicant. Is that okay with you, Kathy? Larry? Okay. So tell us what you want to do.
My name's Casey Gruden. My business is Mystic Yoga Tribe, and I'm requesting a conditional use permit to have a yoga studio in the building.
Now, are you already in there?
I am.
How is it you came before us this evening?
We are moving to the second floor.
Gotcha.
Moving to.
So you never had a conditional use permit prior to this?
I did not.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration?
Sure.
So, I want to add a condition to this, that you have some sort of delineation with the property owner about parking.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Heidnik, is that okay with you?
Yes, it is.
Good. Questions, commission members for the applicant? Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion again, this time with two conditions. The condition identified by administration, and the second condition regarding the parking that Mr. Snow had brought up.
Second.
Just would you call the roll?
Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay, you're set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no old business under new business. Missed a lease review to amend the conditional use permit to allow installation of electric vehicle dispensers and associated equipment at 7777 Reynolds Road. Is that applicant here? Come up and identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Sam Davis with Black &amp; Beach Engineering, and I'm here this evening representing our client Electrify America. You're proposing, Electrify America is proposing to install four high-speed electric vehicle charging dispenser sheets property located at 7777 Reynolds Road. I have reviewed the staff report, and appreciate their review and their support of its proposal, which is that they identified adding additional landscaping, we also agree with that.
Okay.
Answering the questions you all would like.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Comments from the administration?
I'm just curious as to the time it takes to...
Yes, so for the technology that is posed at, for the Electrify America installation, under bright conditions, it will fully charge a compatible vehicle in 15 to 30 minutes.
So you're going to sell some food along with that, then?
That's correct. So that's part of the intent of where it's kind of sided, is it's a good spot where there's sheets itself, has a few other, I was down there earlier this afternoon, there was a few other, pretty easily by the side.
Now, Tesla has charging stations. Will this accommodate their charges?
That's a good question. The, from what I understand, Tesla is a more proprietary charging technology.
Okay.
So Tesla pretty much only works on Tesla. The technology that Electrify America is proposing to use is compatible with a very wide range of makes and models. That's something I can provide to staff if you want to, it's kind of an evolving list as more electric vehicles hit the market.
Okay.
It's a wide range, though.
Now, repeat everything you just told me.
For baby.
So, any other questions, staff? Mr. Sidoti.
In our report, it says the equipment area would be enclosed by solid trex fence, eight feet in height, so on and so forth. Why can't there be a brick enclosure so it's more compatible with the dumpster area and the columns at the gas station, the gas station itself?
Understood. The, I guess the proposed fencing is, I guess, the standard that Electrify America's been using on other sites throughout the nation. I did have an early conversation with staff, it was kind of a brief conversation just about what was allowed there. In my review of the code, the code did specify it was for dumpster enclosures, and so the equipment that's in there is, it's all electrical equipment. So, I mean, at the time we're proposing with the trex fencings, it seemed like the code didn't require to be brick, but it's something that's...
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean we can't consider it.
That's true, yes.
So will you consider it?
I guess I cannot make that decision immediately. I would have to take that back up with the client and the owners as well. So I guess part of that, too, is that the owners, the landlord of the owners do approve of the fence, of the screening that's proposed.
Okay.
But that's, I did mention that early to our team, that it could be a condition that could come up. I just don't know if I can have the authority to make that decision here right now.
We'll give you the authority. Mr. Zeeman, any comments? Can we move forward with this in any regard without the proper screening?
I'd actually like to hear from the administration. Well, again, typically the service areas, whether it's dumpsters or whatnot, they're supposed to match the principal building material on the site. Now, we haven't had this specific type of a request before. It's, we don't have any charging stations in town of this nature specifically. So I guess I have to defer a bit to the administration as to whether or not they think that the nature of the equipment in here may be such that, you know, a brick enclosure isn't appropriate. Again, I'm just not familiar enough with the technical aspects of it, the need to access it, and other such requirements to really have a good answer as to whether or not the requirement should be, you know, perhaps lessened a little bit.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Varga.
We're also responsible for architectural review. We have the facility, the main building, we got them to put brick on their building, we got brick on their columns, covers. There's brick on the building next door and their column covers, and there's, you know, all the buildings around, and the dumpster enclosure was also required to have brick on it. I would like to make a condition of this, that this would also be similar in terms of its architectural appearance, required to have the brick enclosure around it also.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sidoti.
To piggyback on Mr. Varga, you're the expert with respect to the technology. By putting a brick enclosure around this equipment, will that in any way impede this equipment from performing properly?
It would not. I guess the point brought up about access, that is something that, there are gates proposing there that, for anybody who needs repair or access that can get in there easily. I'm not saying a brick, not saying a brick facade would impede that in any way. It just need to be redesigned to allow for ease of access for any maintenance needed.
Mr. Chairman, I just have another question.
Right.
One of those two gates, you're talking about just access gates for maintenance, one of them opens up onto the adjacent property. I don't know if that would require a right of access easement, or an agreement with the adjacent property owner to do that. You can't get in or out of that gate without stepping on the adjacent property. So again, I'll throw that back to the city. Is that, is that something we need to require of them, that they have a use agreement with that adjacent property to have access to that maintenance?
Again, it depends on the nature of the trespass. If it's just there for, you know, a potential emergency, if it's something that's going to be regularly used, and necessarily, again, I know how a trash dumpster works, you know, truck shows up once a week, it takes it out, so we're dealing with the technology, and it may be something that never gets accessed, but it's simply there to comply with some emergency, you know?
It's probably, you probably need two means of egress from that enclosure, and that's probably why the second exit is there. If it's not required that there be any legal stipulation to that, that's fine. I just asked a question because typically you don't have that situation where you step off of your property onto adjacent property.
No, that's my question, so how it actually functions, if it's simply there to, so that someone can make a quick exit in an emergency situation, that's, you know, again, if there's a, we don't call that a trespass, if someone's running across, you know, an adjacent property away from, away from danger.
Okay. Can I withdraw any concern about...
Do you have a comment back on that?
I would agree with that summary, that the purpose of having the two gate accesses, once for, there's a primary access that's closer to the parking lot, and then having it...
So, hey, if we put a brick requirement into this, you need to get in a concurrence with the property owners? Is that correct?
That would be correct, because that would be a change, that would be a site plan change that the ownership would have to review and approve.
Is that something you want to do, Mr. Varga?
Yeah, I want to make it a condition.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Entertained a motion.
I don't have my glasses.
Motion to approve with three conditions. The third condition is that the applicant representative approached the owner and to determine if a changing in the screening materials can be made to a brick masonry enclosure.
Chairman, let me, I would like to jump in and just make it a requirement that it's a brick enclosure.
Okay.
And they can handle it wherever they want to.
By brick, you mean matching, matching masonry to the principal structure?
Matching the principal structure and the structure immediately adjacent to it, to match that with whatever height requirements that you need to have.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Teedman.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sidoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item four, final subdivision of Phase One to create 31 residential lots at Johnny Cake Ridge Road. Is that applicant here?
Yes, sir. My name is Tim Posar, and I'm the representative from Badeus LLC. I have with me John Core from Polaris Engineering, the engineer on the project. We're here tonight for final subdivision approval of the Johnny Cake Golf Course, AKA Ridgewood Acres is the new name.
Okay. Now, before we get too far into this, I have a question for you. You gave preliminary approval of this some time ago.
Yes.
Now, all of a sudden, there's some consternation about access points and that type of thing. How did those evolve with the city of Willoughby?
Well, the, right now, the plan that you see there is the one we originally came in with for approval, and that's what we're going with. Our representatives have met with Willoughby. There were a couple residents that live across the street that had some concerns about bumping the streets up across from each other, but it was already approved through Willoughby, so they're only waiting for their final approval here, and then we're done.
Kathy, any comments back?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I spoke with the mayor of Willoughby today. He kind of gave me their chronology in terms of how their approval process proceeded. He did acknowledge that the final development plan was approved with the city of Willoughby back in April of 2018, and at this point, they're waiting on plat, approval by their planning commission. However, there's been the recent concerns raised by residents with regard to the access and the volume of traffic. So the request of the mayor was, you know, he would like an opportunity to maybe work with the city of Manner, to just maybe try and come to some sort of...
Resolution?
Resolution, agreement, to kind of ease everyone's minds with regard to traffic.
Okay, now, this is not a public hearing, but I'll allow you to speak if you want to speak. I need you to identify yourself for the clerk, please.
My name's Brett Warner, 39385 King Edward Court, Willoughby, Ohio. Our concern is just that they had outlet onto the street. We met with city council with John Thomas Solly, our councilman, with the 100 residents from the King Edward area, Polo Park subdivisions, which are both cul-de-sac roads, and spoke with the mayor. And one of the things that we kind of like to see as a resolution is maybe having a cul-de-sac at the end of the road because it's not really affecting any housing, it's not going to affect any properties. The building lots are going to remain unchanged because that road comes out under the easement of CEI, and if you put a cul-de-sac there, you wouldn't have to have an easement. And the city was also, they could still have emergency access through an access road onto that cul-de-sac instead of a road being an egress or ingress onto Route 84. That's our biggest concern, is the volume of traffic that's going to be on that cornered area right there.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Posar, comments back?
Yeah, I mean, we have a traffic study that we did that we submitted, that it doesn't show any problems with that intersection. What they're talking about is doing an access road that goes into the property just for emergency purposes, that the residents couldn't use, and then you'd have a cul-de-sac. So you really wouldn't have flow through the site from 84 all the way through to Manner anymore. You would come in through Manner, that's what they're proposing, and that does not work for the site. It wouldn't work for emergency services, and it wouldn't work for the traffic flow through the site either. The traffic report doesn't have any major impacts on that intersection there, and that's why we would like to stay with that design as you see it today.
So how do you answer the mayor's concern about wanting to work this out?
Well, we already said we would do some improvements at that, install a sidewalk on the other side of the property for the residents. That'll help. But again, the traffic study doesn't warrant anything else at that intersection. It's designed the way it is, and there should be no issues there.
Okay. Kathy, any comments back?
So our safety forces certainly have concerns with cul-de-sacking that. They always want two, two points of access to the subdivision by cul-de-sacking it and providing an emergency access that would eliminate that. So they definitely have some concern. I guess I would also be interested in hearing comments from the applicant with regard to the conditions that were raised, with regard to sidewalk width, also incorporating a tree lawn into that proposal.
Okay. Comments concerning the sidewalk width?
Yeah, are you referring to item number four on the proposed conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Well, first, I guess I want to state that we've reviewed all of the conditions, one through nine, and the only questions or comments we have are on number four sidewalks, and number six, the phasing. The sidewalks, we were looking at doing the four-foot-wide sidewalk right off the curb, and the reason we were doing that is if we go to the five-foot, located 12-foot off the edge of the road, when anybody's going to park a couple cars in their driveway, they're going to block that sidewalk. We thought this was a much nicer idea so that you're not blocking that sidewalk with people parking in their driveway, and then people have to walk out on the street down and around. So that's why we proposed it the way we designed. Now, I will tell you that the way we designed it is kind of a new thing. They just did it in Willoughby at the Ryan Holmes Development, on the Manner-Willoughby border there, and some others, but nothing really in Manner. But we just felt it made a nicer product as you're driving down the street, or walking down the sidewalk, I should say, instead of having to go down on the street and bump around if somebody's parked in their driveway.
Mr. Chairman.
Varga.
I think we might be missing one of the reasons why the standard design incorporates a tree lawn and then the sidewalk. If you put the sidewalk right next to the curb, it does address the parking issue that you're talking about, but it actually now disturbs the sidewalk significantly. Every time you cross a driveway, you go up and down, up and down, because the sidewalk and the curb cut is two different elevations. The reason you push the sidewalk back is so the sidewalk can be contiguous, continuous without having to go up and down, and I, if I was walking there, I would never walk on a sidewalk that every, every lot, I'd have to go up and down the curb cut just to continue along the sidewalk. So the real reason why there's, it gets pushed back is so that the sidewalk is flat and that it's easy to walk on.
This actually has, they're four-inch roll curbs, so there won't be cuts at the, at all the driveways.
It'll be, it'll be at least four inches.
No, there isn't. I actually live in a subdivision here in Manner with it. We don't have, there are no curb cuts. When you do roll curbs, you don't cut them. That's the point of having the roll curb. That's the point of having the, the roll curb.
Well, I have a roll curb in front of my house, and they cut it at the driveway.
Mine are not cut, and none of our, in my development.
I don't want to, yeah.
The code's five feet, minimum one foot tree lawn. Projects need to be designed according to the code. The code is not going to give way to someone's desire to ignore it. That's code. I really don't know what this debate is all about in terms of the legal authority for the planning commission to ignore a very definitive aspect of our subdivision design regulations.
We agree with that, and for approval tonight, I, I just wanted to make the comment that that's why it was designed the way we designed it and not at the code here. But you're telling me we have to do it at the five-foot, that's fine, 12-foot off the edge, we will accept that condition. We just wanted to make that comment out there, so everybody understands why we designed it the way we did it, and that's the way we would like to see it. We'd like to see the code changed, but we're not here to do that. We're here to get this approved, and we'll accept that condition as is.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
Does the city have an issue with the length of the driveway beyond the property line for parking a vehicle and its interference with the sidewalk? Is there, is that an issue that can be discussed?
We did make a comment in the staff report that the proposed 25-foot front setback allows for enough room within the driveway for a car to park without overhanging the sidewalk, so, I mean, we feel comfortable with that setback.
Okay, so even though, you're talking, you'll be talking about two cars?
Correct.
Or being parked back, front to back, or?
Correct.
Or not parking up close to the garage?
Right.
Okay, so that, so there is enough, just so that everyone understands, there is enough room to park two cars in a driveway?
Correct.
And still have the sidewalk clear, and still meet the minimum requirements of the code?
One car and have the sidewalk clear.
I don't mean, I mean, side to side, or?
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, you're right, it's the double garages.
Yeah.
All right.
And the other condition was six on the phasing. The reason we have it phased coming off of Jackson is the way the, the utilities run through the site. We can't go from Jackson to Mennor Avenue and leave the middle out, the way everything flows with, with the utility lines, so we wanted to go Phase One, Phase Two, and then come out on Mennor Avenue in Phase Three. Now, with that being said, we will have a construction drive down Mennor Avenue that, which will feed back in, basically just like the road is there. So, we will have access, the fire department and all that will have access through the whole site, like the roads are, in a construction drive. But to do Phase Three and skip Phase Two doesn't make sense from the utility standpoint.
So, you misspoke a little bit when you said Jackson.
I mean, 84th, excuse me.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga.
I have a completely different issue to discuss. We've had the city and our commission, and we've talked about this architectural village, I mean, this village green zoning, which you're going for here, and the, I see that there, and if I interpret this, there are some dark lines that, are these walkways?
Yeah, those are pathways. We're doing a dog path or walking path, whatever you want to call it, down the power lines. There's some that lead to the ponds, because this is a, was a golf, it's a golf course. The areas around the ponds are beautiful, so we're doing some benches and picnic tables around the ponds to kind of let people hang out there with some paths that lead to it.
Are you creating any other amenities, other than these pathways?
Yes, benches, picnic tables. They're denoted on, it's hard to tell on that plan, but there are picnic tables there and benches, reflecting benches, that you can sit there and look at the geese and look at the ponds.
Okay, I'm just looking at this, you have two cul-de-sacs on the lower portion, right here?
Yes.
There's a path kind of comes out, and then it just dies.
Well, it goes in, there's three benches there. There's another path off of Brody Lane that comes in, and there's reflecting benches there, and also picnic tables there.
Okay. Is, is there any way you could, and I'm just throwing this out, I'll wait for other comments, could that, that pathway continue to the other cul-de-sac, so that there'd be some ability to have pedestrian circulation around the lake?
The one that, that?
This one down here?
Yes, we could connect that up to Brody Lane if that's?
And is there any possibility, and I'm pushing it, but that upper walk, could that continue through to the other, to the next street?
I don't think that one can. There's, there's kind of a ravine when you get between the two sublots up there where the ponds empty out, so, topography wise, it would be, I think, a?
I'm trying to make this work for the, for the purposes that we allude to, which is, you know, can you walk around? Can you go someplace? Can you circulate without getting, just walking into a dead end and having to turn around and walk away? So, I, I see what's there, and I see the topography you're talking about. Is, could I, is there a possibility that you could get that path through there?
Possibly.
You might have to, you might have to sculpt the ground a little bit, or put a retaining wall in?
Yeah, I think you could bring it up and curve it in towards that, what is that, 38?
Yeah.
The sublot 38 there?
Right.
And tie it into the sidewalk, yes.
So, it just makes it more of a complete idea?
Yes.
And more usable for the, for the people who live there, to be able to actually walk around a little bit. That would, that would allow you to walk almost all the way, you know, at least more than half of the way around that lake, and come out on a street where you could continue the walk or something.
Yes, we could do that.
But I think that would be more, a, a better amenity for the people who live there.
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm going to, I'll make that a, based on just what we discussed, not more than that, continuing those two lanes as a condition?
That's fine with us.
Assuming we go ahead.
Yes.
Any comments from the administration?
Yes, obviously, Willoughby's position is, is kind of putting us in reevaluation mode. Now, obviously, it's, you know, nothing is really changing relative to the, the Mennor properties. The Phase One, let's point out, includes not only, you know, the lands portioned in Mennor, but also in Willoughby that are adjacent to the Route 84 roadway. I, I think that the idea that there might be a construction or haul road coming in off of 20 in furtherance of the start of construction here for Phase One, as opposed to the exclusion of any construction or haul road going to Route 84, was not contemplated by our safety services when it, when they reviewed Phase One for approval. Obviously, there was discussion about temporary cul-de-sac, and there are police and fire department comments in your staff report. They had mentioned how they would like to see Phase Two and Three switched in order for the subdivision's connection to Mennor Avenue to occur as soon as possible to improve response times to the development area by safety forces. So, we're having a little worry here that they, our, our fire and police may have some concerns if they can't access the construction site off of Route 84 versus Mennor Avenue during the initial construction of Phase One.
They will have access.
Okay.
We're, we're, what we're planning on is the old clubhouse up front. We're going to use that as the office for the site developer there to run the job out of. There will be a temporary road that runs from there all the way to the back. The materials will come in for Phase One off of 84, and, but you will have access, you'll be able to drive all the way up to the parking lot that's existing now for the clubhouse.
All right, I guess the question is, is, you know, the nature of that construction road, is that going to be adequate for our, our services? I don't have an answer to that, and I'm not saying the answer's yes or no, I'm just, I'm just asking the question. There's, some of our apparatus are materially different than, you know, you know, a large haul truck or something.
And I'd like to add a question to that, or expand on that concern of access. Will you be selling these units in Phase One without a finished road going to this, this phase?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, you're going to build out Phase One.
Correct.
And are you going to have a finished paved road to this?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Where will, where will that road be?
There will be a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Phase One.
Well, well, no, a cul-de-sac doesn't give you access to this.
From 84.
From 84.
84.
Oh, you're saying, so you're going to, that's going to be a finished road from 84?
Correct. From 84 up to the end of Phase One at that intersection, there will be a temporary cul-de-sac there, and then there'll be a, a construction road that goes from there all the way up to Mennor Avenue, while we're building out the rest of the utilities down towards Mennor Avenue.
Now, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's, the issue then is, that's the source of the concern. We're, we're assuming that Willoughby grants final plat approval, and, you know, to that portion of Phase One, which is in the city of Willoughby. Again, there's been some very specific communications that Willoughby may not do that. Now, I'm not, I'm not trying to get in the middle of that fight between the applicant and the city of Willoughby and, and taking any sides, but when they're talking about, you know, maybe just an emergency point of ingress and egress through those, through those Willoughby areas, that's, I think, not going to be acceptable to our safety services. So, I'm not saying, I'm not necessarily saying let's hold up plat approval for Phase One in Mennor, but I do think that in terms of making sure that we don't have a potential problem out there, and particularly for police and fire protection, that I'd like to see maybe a, a condition that plating be concurrent. In other words, if for some reason, the city of Willoughby does not also approve the plat for Phase One for the property in the city of Willoughby, then, then the Mennor will not permit the approval and filing of the plat for Phase One for the lands that are included in Mennor. So, I'd like to see a condition that we have concurrent plating, and, you know, we wish them the best of luck in resolving their issues, you know, with the city of Willoughby, but I just don't want us to have a situation where we've got a plat of record in Mennor, and we're trying to figure out some alternate means of ingress and egress that are not acceptable to our safety services at that point in time.
Is not our prior approval already predicated upon Willoughby approving the plan that you guys are looking at?
Uh?
Do we already have that in place, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, well, development, development plan approval was conditioned on that. I'm basically taking that to the next step here, which is obviously plating.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, we're fine with that.
So, I'm looking for, I'm looking for plat approval to also be conditioned on Willoughby's final approval of plat as presented for, for the Phase One lands there in the city of Willoughby. So, we can, as, we can get everything concurrently executed, and you can get both plats concurrently filed in Phase One, then, you know, with, with the appropriate bonding, of course, we'll be ready to proceed.
We're, we're in agreement with that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. We need to modify the condition as per Mr. Zeeman.
That's correct. It's a newer condition.
It's definitely, we don't get too many of these, obviously, you know, extrajurisdictional approvals. So, the additional condition would be that the city of Mennor's approval for recordation of the Phase One plat is contingent on concurrent approval by the city of Willoughby for the phase, for the Phase One plat for the lands in the city of Willoughby.
So, that's a 10th, and mine was, the additional one was an 11th condition.
I'm not sure what, I'm not sure where we are.
I'm looking at nine.
We have nine right now.
I'm looking at nine, so I made a condition, and you made a condition, so that's now 11 conditions.
Correct.
And just to clarify, my condition was the continuation of those paths.
Correct.
Create loop conditions between cul-de-sacs.
We're going to take Brody Lane connected to?
And find a way to get it that other way.
The Badeos, and the, vice versa.
Can I just get a clarification on Mr. Zeeman's 10th or 11th, whichever one? If the city of Willoughby approves the design that they wish to approve today with that cul-de-sac and only emergency access, this whole thing comes back to us, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just to make that clear, the development plan at that, at that point fails, and obviously, they'd have to go back to the drawing boards to see whether or not whatever Willoughby's issues are could be resolved. Obviously, we have to take a completely fresh look at it at that point here in, here in Mennor.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did we resolve Condition Six?
Yeah, they got to meet the code, or got to meet the, sidewalks you're cool on, right?
Yeah, the sidewalks we're cool on, and Six was the phasing, and?
Well, we're not, I can't read it.
We wanted to go the one, two, three, like I had talked.
Like the original proposal was.
Correct.
Correct?
Our original proposal, correct.
See, and that's a safety forces condition, so I didn't hear that we were willing to, to agree with the applicant and flip it.
What kind of hardship does that present if we don't, if you don't flip it?
Well, again, it, it's really?
There's not really connectivity, though, right? The way you do Phase Two and Three, because this is, this would be Phase Three there, this part road.
Correct.
So, you still wouldn't, you still wouldn't technically have connectivity between the two, the way the phasing's broken up, because that center road's part of Phase Two, that, that middle piece that connects the two cul-de-sac streets?
Well, the phase lines could be redone.
That's true, but I just, if we were to do it, I don't know how much, how you want to rework the phasing on that.
So, I guess what we're requesting is that when you do Phase Two, there's a connection to Mennor Avenue, however you guys do it.
And we were planning on doing that via a construction road.
Not a construction road, a full-service road. That's what we're asking for.
Gotcha.
I guess another concern is if you do Phase One, and the market goes down, and you're not selling houses like eight years ago, now you're stuck with a Phase One out in the middle of a field, and you, you're not connected to 20 with a real road.
Well, we're in a whole lot of trouble if we can't go past Phase One as it is. So, you know, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. If you're telling me a, a gravel construction road won't work for the fire department, I would ask that we just check with them on that. If, if that's not acceptable, then we'll have to live with what you have in Number Six as is. But we would like to work with the administration and the fire department to come up with an acceptable way to, to phase it the way we have it right now.
Okay, well, in lieu of changing the phasing, would you consider building out a continuous road, finished, to Mennor Avenue with, with the first phase construction?
No, we can't.
I mean, as an alternate to?
We can't commit to that, that we can't do.
All right, I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
And if Willoughby doesn't let you connect the ridge?
You're just, you're floating there, you're an island.
Then what?
Then it's, then we have to redesign and come back anyway, so, I mean, alls I'm asking?
Seems like there's a lot of what-ifs.
To, to Number Six, if we could just add in there, if we can make the fire department, the administration comfortable with some alternate access point from Mennor Avenue, if we could do that, and if we can't, then we have to do it, the phasing two and three like you're suggesting here. We just like the option to work with the administration, the fire department, to try to work something out.
Kathy?
Are you going to grant, sorry?
I was going to say, Kathy, do you think that's a feasible solution? I mean, if you work with the fire department, or has that already been attempted?
Well, we haven't had the opportunity to discuss the construction road with them, so I'm a little hesitant to say, you know, sure. I mean, I guess I would almost be more inclined to, to allow us to have an opportunity to, to talk with them about that before agreeing to that.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's all we're asking for, if we could make it part of the condition that we'd work with the administration, and if we can't make it work that way, then we understand we have to do it this way. That's all.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Sidoti?
Between now and our next meeting, if we were to hold up, because there, there are a lot of what-ifs, a lot of conditions, we need to talk here, we need to talk there, what kind of hardship would that present to you?
A big hardship. We're, we're under contract constraints, and that, that's why I was offering up some language where it allows us to at least try, and if it doesn't work, then we have to go with what this says, and we understand that. And again, Willoughby has approved it that way, and, and we feel comfortable with our traffic study and everything else, that the design you see there is, is what they're going to kind of stamp as approved, because it's already been approved.
Kathy?
But if it doesn't, we realize we have to come back here and start this process all over again.
Would you reiterate again what you had, conversation you had with Mr. Fiala?
Well, the mayor indicated he had a meeting with the developer this week, proposed the temporary cul-de, I'm sorry, a cul-de-sac with an emergency access point, and they have since indicated that they are not in favor of that option.
That's the developer?
Yes.
Okay.
The developer's not in favor of that option. The mayor is still working with the councilmen and the residents, trying to, I guess, The mayor is still working with the councilmen and the residents and trying to, I guess, come to some sort of resolution that makes them a little bit more at ease with the access, recognizing the fact that they also did approve this back in April as you're looking at it now. So mayor said, you know, obviously, he would defer to you as to how you were going to proceed, but he asked if, if there was time to maybe have representatives from the city talk and sit down with the developer, that might, that might be helpful.
Let me ask a question. Just from, setting aside the emergency access issue, we would necessarily approve a subdivision that had these many units on it and had only one point of access. I mean, isn't, isn't that a, I mean, that's a problem too in my mind, is that if in fact, this cul-de-sac, even though he doesn't want to do it and even though we'd prefer him not to do it, but if he did this cul-de-sac over there by Ridge Road and with the little emergency access, well, that's fine for emergency vehicles, but you've got everyone in this subdivision now trying to go in and out the one road on the Mentor Avenue. And in my mind, that's not a very acceptable situation.
On to 84.
No, not on 84 because you'd have a cul-de-sac there.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to get out of 84.
For general use. I'm not talking about emergency.
It would all come out Mentor Avenue, correct.
Everything would go to Mentor Avenue, and I don't think I could approve a subdivision that would put that much strain on the internal circulation and all that dumping out on Mentor Avenue in a location that doesn't have a traffic light.
Isn't that decision critical to any decision we make? I don't know how I could vote yes or no without knowing the resolution on 84. I just can't.
Well, keep in mind, 84 was already approved. Is that not what they said? They just wanted us to take another look at it and offered that suggestion up, and we cannot live with that, nor would we expect you guys to live with that. So, and our approvals were all predicated upon Willoughby's approval. So say something happens, you guys vote yes, and something happens with Willoughby and they change their mind, we can't move forward anyways because your approval is predicated upon Willoughby's design. Exactly. And that's all we're trying to say. We're willing to sit down with everybody, but, you know, they've already given us approval to do that. They're trying to appease some residents and we want to work with the residents. We want to try to make everybody happy, but we have a timeline that we have to meet in order to get this project off the ground, and by delaying it another month when we already have Willoughby's written approval to do this plan.
Going back to Condition Six, and I want the city to think about what I'm saying here in case they don't like what I'm going to say, is that we can go with the existing phasing unless you don't, unless you, and if you don't come up with an agreement with the safety forces, then, then Condition Six applies.
Correct.
It requires the agreement of the, to set aside Condition Six, an agreement to the, with the emergency forces.
Correct.
If you can't get that agreement, then?
Then we have to abide by Six, correct.
Applies.
Yes.
Is that a way to move forward?
So then wouldn't the motion almost be the flip of that?
Actually, yeah.
To say, it is, it is Condition Six unless you were to come to some agreement with the safety forces and administration?
Right. Right. That's, that's correct. That's the way it should be.
And we're hoping to come in with Phase Two and Three all at same time and build out really quick. I mean, that's the goal here. But yes, I agree with what you're saying.
I mean, I'm trying to be sensitive to your time, but I want the city to be comfortable with that, that Six applies unless they can come up with an agreement with the safety forces. That would set that aside.
So why don't you just flip them now? Two and Three.
Because of the utilities we're putting in. We're trying to build our way out to Mentor Avenue.
Yeah, but if you don't come up with an agreement, you still got to do it.
Right. Then we have to do it.
So why not just?
And it's going to add cost to the project.
Why not just do it?
Because it adds a lot of cost to the project to do it the other way.
It's the same cost, it's just that the cost is earlier in the project schedule than, than what you've planned for.
Yeah, but at, at the end of the day, it will cost you more to do it that way. But again, we're willing to work, we're willing to live by that if we can't come and make the fire department happy. So we're basically agreeing it, agreeing with it, just asking for an opportunity to see if maybe they could tweak it a little.
Mr. Chairman, where are you bringing utilities in at? Where's the aquas? Where's that coming in at?
Aquas is coming up and around. It's the sanitary. To service the sanitary on the back half, we have to come up, there's a strip at the end of what would be the cul-de-sac of Phase Two that you have to take. There's a, whatever, it's 20-foot wide strip right there that was left for sanitary access that was part of that.
You're not bringing any of this back to Ridge?
No, that, well, that's the service for the whole Mentor portion. We can't with those because those are two different, two sewer companies. One's the county utilities, Willoughby has their own sewer service.
So we have 12 conditions?
I think we have 11. 11, we modified Six.
I thought we went with Mr. Zeman's concurrence with, is that the 11th? The concurrence with the two plats?
I lost track of the number.
That's 11.
Yeah, Mr. Varga was 10.
10.
And Mr. Zeman was 11, correct.
So I'll make a motion with the 11 conditions and the addition to the sixth condition that it stays as-is unless something is worked out with administration and the safety forces.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
No.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
No.
Mr. Snow.
No.
So four to three passes?
Okay, thank you very much.
Director's report.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
And you wanted me to ask you?
Not looking. Nothing tonight.
Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.